Okay, folks, I'd like to call to order the Iowa City Council Work Session for Tuesday, December 17, 2019. And we're going to start by discussing Iowa City's legislative priorities with our state delegation. So I want to welcome all of them: Mary Mashur, Zach Walls, Kevin Kenny, Joe Bochum. Thanks for coming. And I think you've had a chance to see our legislative agenda. A few of the items are ones that are important to us, but we are not terribly hopeful that the state legislature will act on. I'm thinking mainly of support for climate action initiatives. Possibly -- well, I don't want to say that. I don't want to mention that one. Well, that one in particular. I don't expect the state to act on it, but if they do, that's great. It's important to us and important to the state, I think. But we have several others. I'll just name them and at a certain point ask individual council members to say a couple of words about them. And then you can ask questions or whatever you want to do there. I know you don't have much time, so we'll stop at not later than 20 after. Is that fine? Okay. All right. So, support for climate action initiatives. The next item is support University of Iowa student government proposals regarding rental property move-in checklist. Yeah, so Austin Wu is here. Yeah, and maybe you could say just a few words, Austin. Just come over and just state your name when you get at the microphone and speak succinctly if you can.
Yeah, hello there. Austin Wu, US Student Government City Liaison. Basically, this is something that has been floated for the past year or so as a proposal to mandate at the state level. There's a couple other states in the Midwest that already have legislation to this effect in their state code. And basically, this would mandate move-in checklists for prospective tenants across the state, not just in Iowa City or for university students in mind, but just to -- the intention is to help renters collect information so they're not stuck with unnecessary fees or possibly illegal ones as well. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good idea. Yeah, great. The next item is support legislation protecting the rights of manufactured housing residents. Zach, I know you've focused a lot of attention on this, so thank you so much for doing that. And three of our council members, as you know, worked hard on the task force that generated a set of proposals. So that's the next of our items. Rockney, you want to say a few words about that?
Well, yes. As many of you know, we've had a real challenge in this local region dealing with out-of-state companies purchasing mobile homes. A task force was convened involving local councilors, people on the Board of Supervisors, local legislators. Zach Walls was on there. And one of the things, obviously, we looked at is what authorities and municipalities have in connection to mobile homes. One, to make sure that we're daylighting existing programs. And two, to the extent that we have any regulatory authority, in what way can each individual city update their regulations to make sure that there's adequate protections? And what way can we work as a region? But of course, one of the key issues is what authority we have. And as all of you know, the legislature has been taking away authority from a lot of our local jurisdictions. So some of the things we're looking at, we can't get into a very in-depth sort of list, but, you know, forecause termination, I think, is something that we were looking at. Right now, mobile homes are treated differently than multifamily residential, so maybe some additional procedural protections. We don't like to use the word "price control," but perhaps price justifications if there are increases that we'd almost be looking at as sort of utility. That's obviously going to be pretty challenging in this legislative environment. But these are the sorts of things that I think are going to be very important for us moving forward, because really, until we get some of that local authority, it's going to be difficult to advance in the way that we want to. This is going to be my last meeting on council. I anticipate that we will continue to be involved with this particular task force, so I'm looking forward to be in touch with you on these particular issues related to mobile homes.
Well, I just, I want to thank Senator Kenny. He's been an invaluable ally in working to generate bipartisan support for our legislative agenda. Sarah Barron and the Affordable Housing Coalition here in Johnson County and the task force that was put together were very helpful from my perspective. The phrase I'll use is cautiously optimistic about reform in 2020. I don't think it's a slam dunk, but I do think that the situation has gotten to a point of crisis that the legislature certainly understands how -- is starting to understand how big of an issue this is. So cautiously optimistic.
Wonderful.
Great. All right. I guess it's the fourth item on our legislative agenda is to ensure the continued funding of commercial and industrial property tax replacement payments. No surprise there, right? This has been a continuing theme. Susan, could you elaborate on that a little bit?
Well, as you know, that's obviously a huge issue, and for certain communities, parts of this has been more important than others. I think when this was first going through the state legislature, I think our staff estimated $50 million impact over 10 years, if I recall correctly. Simon's nodding yes. You know, impact, and so that back -- and obviously, not all of that is backfill, but what is designated for backfill is just incredibly important for us in terms of keeping, you know, our budget as balanced as possible without having to raise taxes. So certainly would encourage, and I know you're there, already there, in support. I would just, I'll go back just one quick second on the student government proposal, on the rental property move-ins. If you ever want any good ideas on that, look at the state of Kansas landlord, landlord, tenant laws. I had two kids go to school in Kansas, and they've got some of the best laws, I think, in the country that deal with that. So, thank you.
Thanks, Susan. We constantly get complaints early in the school year from parents about how things are going or not going for their kids who have just rented apartments and all that kind of thing.
Austin and you, ISG, have done a good job of reaching out to some of the legislators, and again, cautiously optimistic.
Yeah.
Great. Okay. The fifth item is to protect home rule authority from local governments. This should come as no surprise to you. As has been the case in numerous state governments around the country, our state legislature, for whatever reason, has chosen to preempt local powers with regard to specific topics. And I don't need to reiterate what those topics are, but it really undermines our ability to govern well in Iowa City. And we need support, and hopefully can get some better -- see some language here. Just make sure that we're enabled to respond as we think we should as the elected representatives of people of our city. The sixth item is to support the continued excellence of the state's primary, secondary, and higher education institutions, AKA the University of Iowa and others, and also Kirkwood, and advocate for additional education funding. And of course, that applies to K through 12 as well. So I don't know if any particular council members would like to say anything about that particular topic, but it's important to us that we can't thrive in Iowa City unless our schools thrive and unless the public educational system thrives. We all know that.
Well, and just well beyond Iowa City, I think, you know, as we look at the entire state and trying to encourage people to come back, whether they're interested in living in one of the urban areas or more the rural areas, there's going to be good school systems or they're not interested in coming back. And that affects the economy, affects the job opportunities. So just encouraging whatever support we can get for education at all levels across the state.
Right. Okay. The seventh item and last is to support the legislative efforts of the Iowa League of Cities and the Metro Coalition. This is a standard thing for us. We're affiliated with the ILC and the Metro Coalition. We don't always agree with the specific items that come up from the ILC or the Metro Coalition, so there are mechanisms by which we can distinguish ourselves from others. But normally, we support their legislative agenda, and therefore, we would like to encourage you to, in general, do that as well.
Jim, do you know what their top priorities are this year? Are they similar to yours or not? Simon?
Going to ask Simon to deal with that. Thanks, Mary.
Yes, very similar to ours. Their focus is generally on home rule authority issues broadly, and backfill funding is very important for cities across the state. You know, the dollar amount for us, as Susan quoted, is a lot higher than a lot of communities in the state, but for the smaller cities that, even if it's a small piece dollar amount comparatively to us, is so important for their budgets that that's really their top priority this year as well.
Thank you.
So if you have other questions, feel free to ask Simon. He usually has the answer. All right. Do you all have any questions you want to ask us, or do any other council members have any other comments they would like to make?
Jim, I was, I, sorry, Mayor, I've been looking at your reaction to the north end and zoning and what has been happening there. So I've been kind of following what the council has been doing to address that issue on the north end. Obviously, many of us did not support the legislation that was passed last year and then how it impacted our community, because I know those are things that you'd been working on for quite some time. I'm hoping that they don't do anything again, but I always remain cautious and fearful that there'll be another hit or another attempt to do something that restricts your ability to do the zoning and restrictions. And I looked at the parking, all of those things that you've been addressing. I don't know if you have anything else to add there, but I'd be, it always helps us to have talking points.
We're acting on a couple items tonight. They aren't huge items, but they have a bearing on this particular topic in the north side neighborhood. With regard to that preemption that you're referring to, it caught us by surprise, and I think we were disappointed to be caught by surprise in that particular way. As you know, we had conversations with state legislators and tried to work out a compromise, and it just didn't happen. But I wanted to make sure you know and that Vicky Lensing knows how much we appreciate the way in which you helped us engage in conversations with the four leader of the House last spring. Yeah.
One of the things is, in order for us to meet some of our climate action goals that we have coming up that are very aggressive by 2030 and 2050, the, you know, the home rules that we have or the ability to do what we need is going to be, we're going to need more ability to really reach it. And so that's why I feel that within our state, every community is very different. You know, we're Iowa City. We're, you know, a pretty large city, but, and there are smaller cities, and they have unique needs that Iowa City don't have. But it is going to be very vital that the state really do look at allowing cities to have more home rule for the uniqueness of its own community.
I think on the lines of that, all the talk about the climate control, one thing we've discussed as a council is looking at our codes and our standards, and some of those are hindered by the state guidelines, that we can't be any more strict than what the state. And we would like to be a little more strict, because we've got some very good rules and guidelines that we want to follow to reduce our carbon footprint. So I think those kinds of things would be helpful, too.
Anything else? Joe, Kevin, Zach?
Well, yeah, thank you, Ms. Mayor. First, Eleanor has a fantastic view of the city council from this city. Really good. Bird's eye view. Thank you.
In a few years, you can apply to be city attorney.
Have to go to school. I just want to say to both you, Mayor, and Councilor Cole, thank you for your service to the people in the city of Iowa City. It's been greatly appreciated. Congratulations, especially to you, Mayor. You've done a fantastic job leading our city. You've attended, you've put the time in, and you're prepared for meetings, and I just think you've done a fantastic job representing us over your tenure as mayor. I just want to publicly say that. I was going to come to the meeting tonight and do that, but I'm here now and thought I'd share that. In terms of legislative session, I think we've got a really tight budget. We're going to get in there and probably do our work and get done. I don't expect much to happen on climate stuff, right, from the Republicans. They still are kind of, we want to protect the solar credit and the solar work we've done. There was an effort to undermine the ability of businesses and homeowners to do that. There, I think there might be a conversation about a sales tax increase, another penny to fund the I- I will and the water conservation, water and soil conservation work. It's hard to imagine in an election year, we're going to raise taxes, but that's out there as something that would be considered, apparently, in some sort of revenue-neutral way. On the building, the building codes and the energy code, it'd be fantastic if we gave local governments more flexibility and more ability to do more. We need to stay up as a state on the latest updates to the energy codes and building codes. I'm not sure that we're necessarily on top of that, but I think we'll hopefully have a decent year for public education funding and regions funding and maybe meet a little bit of the goal that you've identified in that regard.
Okay. I think you all have to run to another meeting, is the way I understand it. Thanks so much for everything you do on behalf of the people of the state of Iowa and for your legislative districts, and to an extent for us, too.
And Rockney and Mayor, thank you very, very much.
Okay, we're going to have a new city attorney come up. See you, Joe. See you, Joe. Thank you.
Guys. Open this thing up. Know what I'm doing. Not ready to do this.
Long time ago. I came here like three thirty.
If you all would give me about 20 seconds to open something I forgot to open.
We just hired new people. They're terrible.
Get the old crew back. I think I might have had your.
I didn't, yeah, I didn't get. Did you, you have two of them? Oh, okay. Sure you have a copy.
I wrote mine.
Okay. If you're all ready, I am finally. The next item is to discuss Houses into Homes funding request. So I want to say a little bit before we get into this and then ask Jeff to elaborate on a couple of points. In our November 19 meeting, we informally signaled a willingness to provide $25,000 in funding to Houses into Homes, but we deferred to more formal decision until tonight's meeting. At the same time, we instructed staff to invite Houses into Homes and four other organizations to meet and discuss how delivery of furniture can be provided more collaboratively and effectively and so on. That meeting took place on December 9. Unfortunately, Houses into Homes was unable to attend due to a scheduling error about which they were profusely apologetic. Jeff might more, talk more about this, but I understand from your December 12 memo, Jeff, to us, that the meeting proved fruitful and will be followed by another meeting, at least you expect it will be followed by another meeting early next year. So I remain, I personally remain unclear about how much, in the way of funding, actually will be, oh, no, I skipped something, did I? Oh, yeah. Last week, we learned that a donor had decided to award $15,000 or more to Houses into Homes, but I remain unclear about how much actually will be donated and when the funds are likely to be available. So Jeff, I know you and I communicated about this by email. I wonder if you could provide as much detail as you can and that you think is useful, both about the amount of funding and about the timing of the funding.
Okay, sure. So full disclosure here, I am the board chair of the 100-plus Men Who Care, which is a charitable organization in town that meets quarterly and through a vote of its membership provides grants to nonprofits. At our latest meeting, which was in early December, first week of December, I was not able to attend the event, but Houses into Homes was the selected charity at that event. We typically, our typical award, again, for 100-plus men who care is $15,000. My understanding is that a generous donation from Randy's Flooring will double that and that there was another $10,000 anonymous donor. So my understanding is it'll be probably about a $40,000 grant in total to Houses into Homes, but kind of what I'm responsible for as a board member of the 100-plus Men Who Care will be about $15,000. The timing of that fun, funding, it comes in two stages. A very small amount, just shy of $3,000, will be distributed within a week or two. That's cash and checks that we collect at the event itself, money in hand. But most of our members pay through a credit card donation that's automated, and we don't, we clear those every quarter. So the bulk of that $15,000, probably about $12,000 or so, will be distributed in early February to the Houses into Homes organization. I can answer more questions about that donation. I don't know anything about the match or the $10,000 donation. You'd have to inquire with the representatives of Houses into Homes who are here tonight regarding those donations. You want me to speak to the meeting at all as well?
Sure.
You have my memo from December 12 in there. We did meet, Tracy Hightshew and I met with four agencies. That was DVIP, Shelterhouse, Habitat for Humanity, and Inside Out Reentry. It was, it was a great conversation. I learned quite a bit, because the history of the furniture project certainly predates my time here in Iowa City, and a couple of these organizations have experience running that program. So we heard from DVIP, who ran the furniture project in the 1990s and early 2000s, and we heard from Habitat, who recently ran the program for several years before stopping it in 2016, I believe. So they were both able to describe their experiences with that project and talk about why they weren't able to sustain it as an organization. I can get into those details. I mentioned some of the causes that we heard in the memo, lack of stable funding sources, the complexities of the logistics, inadequate staff, burnout factor of volunteers. And then kind of the, what I would, what I said here is the erosion of agency resources that were needed to focus on the core missions, right? So those organizations had some other core missions that they felt that eventually the furniture delivery aspect of their service was draining from a little bit. So that's, we discussed those, and that was helpful, again, for me to understand that history. Then we got into, what are you currently doing? What are each of those four agencies doing when it comes to managing furniture, whether that's accepting donations and delivering them? They all do, to some degree, something with furniture delivery. Again, the memo describes that on one side you have Habitat for Humanity, which will go out and collect furniture donations, store, and stores them in the restore, sells those, and on some occasions will donate those to the nonprofits that they work with. The Shelterhouse has a crew of five that deliver furniture on a weekly basis, and they estimated about 670 hours of staff time that's dedicated annually to furniture delivery for their clients. And DVIP and Inside Out Reentry both worked with furniture on a much smaller scale. They don't have storage, but certainly they do what they can to make sure that the clients that they serve have furniture. That's often referring folks to Houses into Homes, working with Habitat, putting a call out to donors, and trying to figure out, really, again, doing whatever they need to do to get those clients furniture. And then we wrapped up the meeting by talking about the capacity and the willingness to collaborate, to help meet what was acknowledged to be a very great demand in the community for this type of service. And I think every organization expressed a desire to continue to have those discussions. They said they'd like to be part of a collaborative solution, and that ranged everywhere from Habitat having insured trucks and some extra storage space to Shelterhouse saying there's maybe some Vista employees that can help with some coordination, information sharing, that sort of thing. DVIP and Inside Out, you know, basically saying we have access to some donors, some volunteers, and certainly a lot of information that we can share. We didn't, we didn't have the full discussion, because certainly we didn't have the expertise of Houses into Homes in the room. So we all acknowledged at that December 9 meeting that we try to get back together again. After that meeting, a couple days later, I met, Tracy and I met with Lucy Barker from Houses into Homes and had another fantastic discussion. Again, I learned a lot about their organization and what they do. Certainly, they were able to demonstrate the need in our community. You have the information from them, and you are packet. That was shared with Tracy and I in the follow-up meeting that we had, and I think that data kind of speaks for itself. They, they do get a lot of referrals from a number of agencies in town, both that were at that meeting and other agencies. And, yeah, again, I think that, I think that information kind of speaks for itself there, the charts and graphs. So I'll be happy to try to answer any questions. I wanted to wait till the end of this meeting so I could understand where the council's going to go with this, but I do, regardless of what you decide tonight, plan to try to convene that group again and continue those discussions. I think if nothing else, even if there's not service collaboration opportunities there, which there probably are some, there's definitely an opportunity to share information and to better collaborate. You know, some, there's overlap with the clients that are being served here. So just sharing information and making sure everybody's aware of what the others are doing would probably benefit everybody.
Any questions for Jeff? Sounds like a very fruitful meeting. I'm really glad that it took place. But we also now are in a situation where we have new information that involves new funding that we did not expect. I don't know about you, but that affects my thinking about how we should respond. I'd be happy to elaborate on that if you want, but otherwise, I'd like to hear from you about what you have in mind.
I did have another question for Jeff. Had you heard anything with the DNR grant and that, because that was $10,000?
Yeah. We have not got anything official from the DNR. I can tell you, our staff is pretty well-plugged into that grant process, and they feel very confident that it will be funded, if not at $10,000, at a number probably pretty close to $10,000. Given the holidays approaching, I don't know if that'll be announced before, before those holidays, or if it will probably more likely be announced shortly thereafter. So it could be any day when that announcement comes out. That will be a reimbursable grant, so the way that will work is Houses into Homes will be able to submit an invoice to the Iowa City landfill. Our staff will then cut a check to cover their invoice, and then we will get the funds from the state. So that turnaround time, assuming an early January announcement, they could be paid out in January, probably latest February, for that $10,000 or close to $10,000 award that we are sure, but not completely confident that we will get.
So I'm concerned about the transitional time between now and mid-January or maybe as late as mid-February, depending on what source of funding we're talking about. So that's affecting my thinking also, that maybe we should do something to fill the gap in that transitional time. But it no longer seems reasonable to me to fund it entirely, the $25,000 entirely, because now there's what appears to be $40,000 coming from one or more other entities. So, but I think some transitional funding makes sense to me.
Can I just ask you a question, Mr. Mayor? Do you think like the $25,000 or even the $40,000, you know, you're saying that because they get the $40,000, maybe the 25 is not needed? Just to hire a full-time administration position and also rent a truck and space and do all this data entry and do all this job, do you think this could be done by $25,000 or even $40,000? Number one. Number two, do you think they can just go and advertise for a position that could be just for six months or maybe eight months? Who can accept this kind of position? They have to, when they advertise for administration or staff, it has to be like, they have to have sustain money. And my understanding from day one, they will ask us for 25, but that is not, that's it. No, 25 is nothing if we compare what actually they need, because they have to seek, they said they're going to seek another funding. I knew that from day one that. I asked them, did you reach out to like, be another organization asking for fund? They told me, yeah, we're going to do that, because we asking the city for 25, we're going to work, find out another space, because this is not only about the staff, this is about renter. this is about renter, about all this. And they, they cannot really advertise for a job without securing the fund. I think we should move for the 25,000 regardless of they're going to have another organization. And I will encourage them to come back when the time that come for the agency, aid to agents, aid to agency program to apply. And if they can go and apply somewhere else, this is great need from all the data that we see here. This is regarding your point. I, I really just want to address your point, but I have a lot of thing to say here to prove that this is really great need. And also the thing that's interesting for me with the meeting, the goal for the meeting, like the, to meet the other agency, I always, you know, I just being struggling finding out why we want to do that. You know, just to cooperate with each other, say being doing that. From the material that I have, I have bunch of, you know, referer agreement with all the agency. That means housing into home, reach out to your agency and they file agreement that they're going to work together and provide furniture if they ask for. And also I, I think like now, before I saw two email has been sent, one on the summer, during the summertime, one on September. They asking the agencies, they telling them, hey, we are drawing here. We need help. If you have referrer, send us referrer. If you have volunteer, send us volunteer to help us out. Otherwise we will be closing. And those people, they never talk about they have truck that been stored there. That was they just told Jeff about it. Why they didn't provide this help, help long time ago? They never talk about what they can, the way that they can help. I'm grateful, thankful that they are, they're going to do this from now and on, but why now? After like one year of those people are struggling, those two volunteer and they have another volunteer working, going from their own time, from their kids' time to try to go and help a member of our community and those agencies have been existing there for, forever. They never, ever said that they have a truck. I will really want to hear from you guys. Did they ask, they said all this helps? Have they said, if you need a truck, we have a truck just like the Habitat? Did they said if we have, if you need volunteer, we're going to give you? Why now? This is interesting to me and I would really love to add the Shelterhouse. I, I just don't see how yet, but I have a lot question for Shelterhouse, even though they are not here. How do they receive the donation? My understanding, and I hope if they, they can answer this question, they receive donation from the, the donor to the Shelterhouse because they don't have, they are not specialized on furniture, of course. They don't have a store for furniture. Like for example, I'm going to donate a chair to the Shelterhouse. I will take this Shelterhouse and from me direct to the client. No inspection. If the, if this have a bed bug, if it have, we need people who is specialized on this. Housing into home, they inspect their, their mattress, their beds, everything before they give it to nobody. Like because if you, if it's not good, why should I give somebody bed bug? And I don't, I'm not saying that or accusing the Shelterhouse is giving bad furniture. No, by any means, I don't want nobody to understand me wrong. But when we have somebody is specialized in just like boot a time to inspect all the furnitures in the store, that's work, Jim. When we, when we go and accept the donation from those people, that's work. When we come, we enter this data. The way that they go to the house and inspect the house and see, hey, what do you need? You need furniture? You are living on the third floor? Maybe you, you don't need big one? They go and do like survey. All this need time and need full-time position in order to fulfill the need of the, of the community. And I don't, I appreciate those organization, but they are not specialized on this, even the city. I just figured out that after the, the furniture project closed, this is even came to the city and the city can, cannot do it because they have to dedicate the time to do this. And there is no time. I think that clearly tell me all those agents, they couldn't do it because they don't have a special person to take care of this. This need a full-time person. A full-time person need to get paid. And if those people are passionate about it right now and they are volunteering, this will be closed if we don't have sustained staff to be there forever so they can sustain this program. Those people, if they suddenly something happen to them, hopefully good thing and they move out. This, this will really not going to sustain. That's why we need the staff. If they hire somebody right now and they don't like that anymore, they can advertise before they go and make sure this program is still in place. Thank you. I hope you support it.
Okay, thanks Maz. What do the rest of you think?
I guess I would like to speak next. Sort of to follow up what Maz had said, sort of, I look at this as sort of like a series of Venn diagrams with the core function in terms of what Houses into Homes does with the furniture. There are some other organizations that have some overlapping, you know, needs and services related to them, but I think as Maz points at, that's not their core competency. Jeff, your history of the prior efforts, I think was very important. You know, a lot of times when we have new ideas in the city of Iowa City, there's usually a couple of different things that you have is the people that have done it before indicate, well, you realize we've done that before and it either did or did not work. Jeff identified a couple of causes for why those previous organizations no longer exist or no longer fulfill that function. The first one he mentioned was lack of a stable funding source, which I think is an issue here. The second is, is employee burnout. I mean, we essentially have the work that you guys are doing and work that your volunteers are doing that is extremely intensive. It's physically taxing, it's mentally taxing and to expect especially over the winter that they're just going to be able to do that at the rate that they have in the past, I don't think that's really realistic. The third relates to the new funding sources. Those are obviously great news and I think that reflects in terms of the work that you've done. But I don't think those are going to be sort of things that can be repeated on into the future. I don't think you can expect a Hundred Men Who Care donation yearly. I mean, that's my understanding, Jeff, with, with Hundred Men Who Care, these are sort of one-off grants. To Maz's point, you're right. I mean, 25,000 is a lot of money, but when you're talking about institutional, you know, resiliency over time, that's not very much as far as that goes. And, you know, during my time in Iowa City, I've never really seen an organization that's been this long, this competent, has had a greatest impact. So I'm going to support still the full 25,000. To the DNR point, I mean, if that funding does come through, I mean, maybe we could have a discussion whether we could get maybe a credit towards that. So maybe the city's contribution would be like 15. For now, I would like the 25,000 and then potentially if we do get the DNR grant, terrific, then maybe we could give a credit. So it may be the 15 of new money. But that's something I think we definitely need to support as far as that goes. And the final thing is too, is DVIP and Inside Out are terrific organizations, but they have very specific missions. You know, Inside Out Reentry is for people that are coming out of prison, which is terrific. I'm glad we're providing those resources and we'll welcome those inmates in and try to provide them opportunities. DVIP does, you know, wonderful work, you know, domestic violence. What more higher calling can you have than that? But that's a very limited case-specific mission as well. One of the things I'm thinking about is what do we do with a, with a family who just happens to be resource challenged? They're not fortunately domestic violence, they don't have any criminal history. What about them? And I think we've seen too many of those kids have been living on the floors and that's not being melodramatic. There have been too many of our, members of our community that do not have access to those basic needs. And I think the final point that I would make is although we've had some tension in this process, I think we should also recognize and celebrate that what is the conflict that we have in the city of Iowa City is the conflict that we have is organizations trying to help and serve too much. So I think in terms of the big picture, even though there's been some tension, hopefully this can be a creative tension that will create growth. Though there will be follow-up meetings, you guys are going to have to have some very difficult conversations moving forward. But I think this is a creative tension that we need to celebrate, even though we've had some of these, these anger and, you know, hurt feelings a little bit in terms of this project. And I think we all recognize this is likely to be a went off thing. As people know, this is going to be my last meeting tonight. I, you know, hopefully in the future, there can be some discussion, what do we do when we have these new funding requests? How can we standardize this if there are some additional needs? Maybe there needs to be an ad hoc funding committee, these sorts of things, so we can institutionalize a little bit. But I'm going to still support the full 25,000.
I'd like to ask a clarifying question, Rockney. I don't quite understand what you mean about giving a credit for $10,000 from DNR.
Well, my, my point is is that-
How did you mean it?
The point is, is I'm talking about a funding level of 25,000. I understand the grant, we don't know whether that's going to go through. We think that it will come through. And if it does come through, essentially that would lower the, the new money awarded. If it doesn't come through, it would still be at the 25,000.
Okay, I understand.
So I guess for me, I, I go back to the original need. And then original need was related to having a, a full-time staff. So that's what I think about. And when I think about the operational cost of any agency, it is typically larger than just one staff. So Houses into Homes request was for staff and at that point when they came to us, they were at a critical point where they needed, they sought funding from several different people to try to meet their mission. And so it was unique that they, that they actually asked for staff because that's something that I think people typically don't see from agencies asking for staff. And so when I think about the staff that they're asking for, it is really for someone to kind of coordinate all the pieces together, kind of like a social worker. And that, you know, to me is, makes sense as far as what that agency does need would be like that, that hired individual that can really dedicate time to making sure all the pieces are together and, and, and navigate it that way. As far as like their overall operational cost, we're, I think many of us know business where you do have a large operational cost to try to meet some of the, the needs within your agency. I think Houses into Homes is really, if we look at where they are and all the efforts that they've done, they're kind of at ground, I'll use this lightly, they're kind of at ground zero where they really see the need within our community and they want to do all that they can to meet the need. So the one good thing is I'm very happy to hear Jeff's report about the collaboration with the meeting that took place and some of the things that may be collaborated amongst the agencies. I think that's powerful, especially given the state that there was several agencies that tried to move this along with our, within our community before. The need is there, so there's no question about the need being there. The money that Houses into Homes got, I think that's awesome. I, what I believe is people are hearing their, people are hearing the need of those within our community that are, in need of furniture. And, you know, I can put the picture in your head about beds and people sleeping on the floor, but ultimately we're talking about just human basic rights that I feel people should endure and have within our community. And so again, I think it's great that they get funding. We, as Maz stated, I believe in the, in the first initial conversations that I had, they were still looking for funding. So that wasn't a surprise to me that they did get funding from an unexpected source for them. For me, I am, I am still with the need to support them for the 25,000. You know, their budget, I think, needs the 25,000. Their budget needs the 45,000. They came asking council to support the mission of those that are in our community. And, and I think that we're still there. We're not, even though they got 40,000 potentially, they'll probably get another five or 10,000 somewhere else. They have, the agency have needs and so, and that's just operational cost, that's not staff. I mean, $40,000 for operational and any of the other programs that they're going to be applying to, whether it's through our emergency funding, that's always subject to not being approved. I think right now today, the, you know, the, their original request was to, you know, help to ensure their success. And I think that we are still back to that. We know that they're going to be seeking more funding. I would love for them to be independent. Given the fact that there's two other agencies that have started this and for whatever reasons ended that program, I, I feel like we need an agency that can focus in on this and that is Houses into Homes at this point. And so I'm going to support it.
Okay, how about the rest of you? Well, I'll, I'll chime in here. You know, I, I must say, I was working under the understanding that the, the funding request of $25,000 that we first, we first heard of from Houses into Homes was their full financial need, you know, that this was, this was the gap in their financing. And if that financing, the 25,000 were furnished to them, they would be financially whole. I, I now understand that that's not the case. But it, it, it did take me by surprise. I thought, you know, when we, we heard about the $40,000, you know, that certainly was good news and it's certainly good news now that I understand that the need was actually far greater than what I understood it to be. If, if that $40,000 hadn't emerged out of this process, we would be significantly short of even coming close to their financial need. But where, where I've landed now is that, you know, it's clear now that their funding need is greater. I think, Rockney, your suggestion is a reasonable one. I would just add to it that it seems to me of the funding sources, the one that's, we have the most discretion over and is the most secure in terms of, you know, that it will be there would be the, the Affordable Housing Opportunity Fund. So ideally what would happen here is, is we'd get the 10,000 from the state and then supplement that with 15,000 from the Affordable Housing Opportunity Fund. As I think Jeff in a, a previous memo stated that the Houses into Homes request is, is in line with the intent of the Opportunity Fund. So I think that seems to be the, if we're going to, if we are going to fund this, the 25,000 in addition to the 40, it seems like that's an appropriate place to go.
Sound good.
Okay. Pauline, is that-
Well, I like, as with John, I was confused because I thought the original intent of the request was just to bridge that gap. And I, I want to go back and read the original memo that if they were able to fund a director that could help with fundraising, et cetera, they would be able to use what funds they had for storage and those kinds of things and, and truck rental. So I was a little confused that the most recent memo elaborated that it's only a part of the budget needed to create an administrative position, pay for storage and truck rental. I like John, I, I was ecstatic. I jumped up and down when, when I saw that they had gotten the donation from the Hundred Plus Men's and Randy's Carpet and thank you to those groups and the private donor that bumped that up. That really I thought provided a major infusion financially to that, to the Houses into Homes. And Rockney, you mentioned that other groups have very specific missions, but I think that they all overlap and I think that was apparent by, and, and thank you Jeff and Tracy for meeting with the four agencies and then a follow-up with the Houses into Homes person because I think that was what was needed and I think that's what we requested initially is they need to get together. Because what I'd seen was kind of a he said, she said, and, and as I think Rockney talked about too, some, some, the anger and hard feelings that, that was really unfortunate that, that happened. But I think that helped to clear up at least for me that, that those other agencies are willing to collaborate and help. And I think if we give them some time to do that, another, the follow-up meeting and perhaps we could do an initial, I'm, I'm still not in favor of doing the entire 25,000, but do an initial donation. And as John said, the Affordable Housing Opportunity Fund that Jeff recommended sounded like a good place to start.
Well, I've tried to sit here and, and listen and, and really hear very carefully what everybody has said because as you know, I came at this from a different perspective, I think, than pretty much everybody last time. And one of the things that I keep hearing is how much money they need, different interpretation maybe of what came out in that original memo versus what everybody is hearing now in terms of their need and still a, a gap. But when I look at it, unless I've missed something, I haven't seen any financial data. All right? And so when we, we have a very specific process for agencies to go through and fill out some- and fill out some fairly significant forms in terms of their budgets, their expenses, you know, what they need, what they're going to use the money for, et cetera. There's a timeline to do that, and there's a very specific data and considerable amount of data that's required. So the HCDC can evaluate those. Or if it's the Social Equity and Racial Justice Grants, the Human Rights Commission can evaluate those and make, hopefully, very fair and good decisions in terms of how we are allocating the resources that as a council we have indicated will go towards those kinds of grant programs. So, as I sit here, and certainly want to commend Houses into Homes for the work that they have done. And obviously, you know, tons of referrals, et cetera. What I am still not seeing is a process that I think is fair and equitable to all the agencies in the community. I don't doubt that they need to hire a staff person. I have concern when I hear that the hiring is an executive director, because what does that mean in terms of salary and benefits, et cetera? So again, I'm sitting here, and I have no, I have no idea how this money is being spent. There is, I have not seen any documentation that tells me actually exactly what their commitment is in terms of how this money is being spent. And yet, we require that of every other agency that goes through our application processes. So not only is it not timed with our processes, we're not even requiring a modicum of the information that we require of those other agencies. I totally agree that this is an incredible need in our community. We have lots of agencies that are providing for needs that I would say are, they could come in here and make just as compelling an argument, okay? A suggestion that I would make, it would be, it would be a bit of a delay, and there would not be a guarantee, but we do have the application starting for the emerging agencies. And to have them apply through that process, and if they get selected, then to fund the money before July 1st of next year. I've asked Jeff if that is a possibility, that could be done. But at least then, we would essentially be allowing them, and I'm not sure what that deadline is, I think it's January. But there still would be that possibility of them getting that money if they were awarded prior to July 1st. But at least then, we are requiring them to go through the same process that all the other agencies do.
One of the things that I think we talked about the first time we had this meeting was there is no emergency, and the emergency request or the out-of-sequence requests for any funding from any agency, I still call it the best-kept secret or a secret, is a direct ask to council. And so, and I don't think that Houses into Homes, you know, totally knew what all they were getting themselves into, because for them, this has also been a little bit of a stressful ask. But what they did do was bring light to this particular need within our community. I agree, Susan, that we don't know the numbers, you know, totally verbatim and all the other things, that I know that the other agencies go through. I've been a part of grant processes before. And when you have a new agency, typically, they don't have a lot of data. And that's one of the reasons why we have the emergency agency funds. Because those, you look at those programs and agencies a little different than kind of your legacy agencies. And it was developed to really give an opportunity for newer agencies to kind of have an opportunity for funding. I think, again, I go back to, like, their original ask, and that was really to help meet this need in the community through the specific ask of an administrator, so that this agency can be successful. All the other cost, that's not what they're asking for. They're asking for a staff. And we know that $25,000 does not, even if it's part-time staff, the work of, and I really see this as more of a social worker type, navigating the needs, meeting with families.
Is that what they see it at? Because that's part of my question. But that's, see, that's part of my question, Bruce, is I haven't seen real documentation about, because everything I've seen has said executive director. So again, it's just an indication to me of the lack of information, which I think is inappropriate then in terms of the...
And I hear what you're saying. I think it is an executive director title, but it's almost like when an individual starts their business, in a way, where they are doing everything, they're the janitor.
Oh, I get it, I get it.
And I think that's where they are. And so, their request was very specific for the 25,000. So, I know that that role will require more than 25,000. But I do hear what you're saying. And I do believe that when we go and we create, we've already asked staff to start to work on that emergency ask to council. We do want it to be something that will be predictable and like a process, that council is not at the forefront of that. At this point, it is council. It is, we're responsible for any request that goes outside of that aid-to-agency emergency type, or the emergent agency request. So, this is what, it lies with us right now. Otherwise, Eleanor would say, council, you don't have that ability. So, right now, we are that emergency ask. And I like to keep it a good secret, because I don't want to be in this position.
So, I'm conscious of the time and conscious of the fact that I think we all want to have a decision come out of this discussion. So, and I'm aware that four people have indicated that they support $25,000. So I just want to ask a basic question. Has anybody been persuaded away from their support of the $25,000 by what, as a result of what the rest of us have said?
No.
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 I would, I don't, I don't, I still support it. I think I too have had some concerns about having a better understanding of what the business plan is moving forward, especially in that it is, you know, as I think, Bruce, you were describing, it's transitioning from, in a very significant way, from what's essentially a volunteer organization to a more, you know, actually paid staff and a certain organizational presence. And so, I am concerned about how the funds will be applied. So, and this is in a realm of, you know, our work that I'm not as familiar with, what role staff could play in terms of helping articulate a business plan, so to speak, if that's possible.
And I think also, we can, I just ask Jeff if that's okay, but he said, yes, the council can ask them to tell us, like, after you start working for a certain time, maybe we can ask them. In six months, we would like to know how did you use our fund? Or in one year, you can do that. And I remember there is some fund that we, like, say, for example, I always, like, Rockne, he just suggests sometimes, like, $10,000 for the shelter house. You did suggest that one, like, during the...
The bench controversy, yeah.
The bench, you know? But we did not ask them, like, how are you going to use this, like, 10,000? Or, because he didn't ask for it. We just give it to them. That's, to be honest, because they didn't ask for it. But now, as you said, this is new organization. They don't exactly know how, you know, this is part of the administration. It's not the whole cast. We know that they're going to use it for that, and they can use it for something else. But I guess we, I guess really, I encourage them to tell us sometime, like, in like, after six months or after eight months, tell us how did you use our money? Because we would like to see, how did the city money being used?
Just to be clear, though, John, your position is no. Your position has not changed from what you previously said. So we do have four votes.
Yeah, and I want to just say that I think the DNR money, 10,000, 15,000 from the affordable housing, that's what make it 25.
So you would agree to the credit concept, Maz, that we essentially authorize 25,000. If in fact, the DNR is granted successfully to them, we would reduce the award then to 15,000. Is that...
And they get a total of 25.
They'll get a 25. And if they don't get the grant, they still get the 25.
From the affordable house, yes. Yes, that's what I really propose. If you, you know, 10,000 from the grant, for any reason, if that grant is not, like, successful, they can just get the 25,000 from that.
And the other 15 from the Affordable Housing Opportunity Fund, right?
Yes, yes.
So Jeff, does, do you track that? Does it make sense?
No, I track that. And when it comes to the annual report, you can certainly ask for an annual or a six-month report. My, I would think that the Houses into Homes, if they want continued funding from the city, they will begin applying through the aid-to-agencies process. And the application requirements will basically have them spell out all that information anyway. So those emerging agency applications come out in January for next fiscal year's awards. So, I don't know that you need, I know I told you, you can do that. But if they're going to go ahead and apply for that anyway, it might be a duplication of information.
I personally would like to receive a very, very short statement, like, one-page memo equivalent, from Houses into Homes about how they anticipate spending. The 25,000 they would get from us, plus the, anywhere from 15,000 to 40,000 that they will get from, as a result of the 100-plus Men Who Care donation. Does that sound like a reasonable thing? I mean, I don't want a lot of elaboration, but just some sense of how they...
Well, then, just give them time. And when the agency, aid-to-agency program is, when they supposed to submit data application?
There's a meeting, I think, on January 15th, and then they're due on the 18th of January.
That will come along anyway.
We don't need that, because it will be next month, they will apply again for another things, I guess.
Okay.
And we're going to have that. Why we make them, like, do the job twice, especially if they don't have staff right now.
Okay. It sounds to me like we have an understanding here. With clear majority support, right?
Yes, yes, three yeses.
All right, so unless you tell me otherwise, I think we can move on to our next topic. Which would be clarification of agenda items. And I want us to do, hold on, I got to find it in my notes here. I want to do item 12 first, which has to do with the moratorium. So now, I got to find item 12.
And we also do 6F.
Yeah, but I mean, I want to do item 12 first, is what I mean.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, okay, so, all right. Yeah, so this has to do with repeal of the permit moratorium. So, we've gotten several memos or emails or whatever from John, from Austin Wu, from Sarah Barron, and from individual residents that recommend further action for us to consider prior to ending the moratorium. My personal sense is that we are already taking some of the actions they recommend. Also, some of the recommendations won't help us ensure a diverse population and housing choices in the relevant neighborhoods. And third, I think some of the actions are probably not legal, though I'm not an attorney, Eleanor would have to advise us on that. But I also think some of the recommended actions might be worth considering carefully. And that's the most relevant point, I think. So, to help us decide how to proceed, that is, whether to vote up or down on terminating the moratorium early, I'd like to ask Tracy or Jeff to walk us through IP number 8 from the December 12th information packet, which has to do with what we are already doing, or have already done. And then I ask John to briefly summarize his recommendations. And hopefully, we can have a better understanding as we go into our formal meeting discussion. Make sense? So Jeff, can you do that, or Tracy? I'm not sure which would be better.
Tracy, why don't you come up as well? Well, between Eleanor, Tracy, and I, we'll get through this. Sorry, I just need to pull it up here.
I think it's very important that we hear this, but I think there may need to be a little recap
Yes, absolutely.
in the public meeting.
Do you have it all on a PowerPoint, Tracy? Is it all listed out there?
Yep, here it is.
So, just real briefly, as Tracy's organizing the PowerPoint up there, an important thing to keep in mind is that a lot of focus has been on the rental cap. But the rental cap was one of only, was just one of several strategies that we implemented after the state legislative changes. Certainly, it was the most powerful and impactful strategy, I think, clearly. But we did do a lot of adjusting to the, both the zoning code and the housing code. And that's what we're saying in our communication to you. With the addition of the radon and the paving, we think that we've found the balance that we're striving to achieve. We won't know that until we get a few more years under our belt, post-rental cap, post-moratorium, and really see how the market responds. But we feel pretty comfortable with where we're at. You can continue to pull these levers and twist these dials any way you can, as Tracy walks through these. We can make stricter parking requirements. We could change open space requirements, common space requirements, bedroom size requirements. But every time you twist that dial a little bit, just know that there might be an unintended consequence elsewhere in the community. And you might actually be working counter to some of your other goals that you set. So, with that, I'll let Tracy walk through these.
Okay. Mostly, when we do the zoning and housing code, most apply citywide. So we're always careful about what we do, because what you do in one area of town, if it's citywide, you limit options in other parts of town or for different property owners. There's some that apply to the university-impacted neighborhoods or the central planning district, but not a lot of them are citywide. So we've made several changes since 2017. The zoning code changes included updated rear setback to discourage inappropriate expansions in certain zones. So if you have a house, it just couldn't keep expanding in the back to the point where you'd have no rear yard. We limited the number of bedrooms and attached single-family duplexes to four. We updated the private open space requirements for single-family duplexes, also multifamily. And we moved to annual inspections for certain type of rental properties. So if you have a single-family home with more than four bedrooms, if you have multifamily properties older than a certain, I think it's 1996, sororities, fraternities, and SRO-type housing, those are annually inspected now. We've also made some budget changes. So we hired a full-time staff person to proactively go out there and enforce nuisance types violations that you see throughout the city. We hired another full-time inspector due to all those increased inspections we'd be having since we moved from a every-other-year inspection cycle to an annual inspection cycle. We also now pay for a half-time part of the police officer's salary to go out and work on enforcement, especially neighborhood nuisance issues that you see after 5:00 PM or on the weekends, when our standard staff is not in the office. We made several housing code changes. And a lot of this goes back to, are that, is the house appropriately sized for the intended use? A lot of single-family home uses are not intended for multifamily. They weren't intended for multifamily. So we tried to address some of those issues by defining the habitable room and set minimum requirements. We limited space, how much bedrooms could occupy the house in single-family duplex units. We required interconnected smoke alarms. So if you're going to add a bedroom, you'd have to have interconnected smoke alarms. We defined set requirements for minimum shared living space. We required permanent separation between duplex units for privacy, for safety. We required deadbolt locks for each dwelling and rooming unit. And we limited parking to the rear of the lot for single-family duplex properties. Those were, and then your goals, as we looked, as, you're going to see those front paving restrictions and radon, were to address some of these city council goals for new regulations that's listed above. Do you have any questions?
I think we shared in the memo, if I can add that. If you didn't get a chance, at the end of the memo, we share the limited data that we have. So there are 2,300 single-family and duplex rental properties in the university-impacted neighborhood area. And since we adopted this long list of changes that Tracy just went through, 13 properties have added, or have added bedrooms, a total of 20. have added, or have added bedrooms, a total of twenty-one of those, and ten of those thirteen properties just added one bedroom, which I don't think, you know, anybody sees as, as a too drastic of an action. You know, we do have the one outlier, which has received a lot of focus in this discussion, which is nine thirty-eight Jefferson, which was a six-bedroom addition. That was actually an occupancy increase of three, so it was previously authorized for an occupancy of four, now it's an occupancy of seven. So, to date, we haven't seen a whole lot of expansions of bedrooms with rental properties, but, you know, until the moratorium's pulled off and we know, you know, exactly how the market's gonna react, we can't tell you for sure, again, if we made the right level of changes. In response, real quick, just to set the table for your, your discussion with Councilman Thomas's memo, we really think that if you, if you feel that more is needed, you probably need to work within these, these, these levers here. We don't necessarily think the answer's in definition of a use. Certainly, you could explore incentive programs, but from a regulatory standpoint, you're probably looking at bedroom size, open space, common space, all those types of things, and whether it should be thirty-five percent, or forty percent, or thirty-seven percent, we honestly don't know. We've, we've, we made our best guess with this, and I think only time will tell.
I'd just add, as maybe an indication, that these efforts have, have made some differences, that after the, the state passed the occupant, said we couldn't do familial occupancy, familial status occupancy, you'll remember when we put that moratorium in place to give us time to study the issue, one of the things that told us that we had a real problem is we got, after that legislation, forty applications for expansions that would add bedrooms. That was forty of them, and we haven't seen, since we put these in place, and we've, we have not seen near that number of bedroom expansions.
Okay, does anybody feel a need to ask Jeff, or Tracy, or Eleanor a question? Or maybe we can just turn to John?
Maybe just one basic question. You know, I'd sent you an email, Jeff, and said, you know, what were some of the issues that were possibly considered that we could do, but maybe we didn't get to counsel? And, and one of the responses you gave was the evaluation of sprinkler systems for houses that convert from a single-family, you know, owner into a rental situation. I know that that would probably be an expensive change, but do you have any sense of how significant an expense that would be, you know, if there was that sort of change? Because that's, because one of the concerns, and we'll talk about it later during the meeting, is, is to Tracy's point, that these older structures especially, were never designed for densities of eight and nine. One of my good conversations that I was staying a long time ago was really the enforcement challenges on these houses that really never designed for this density, and we have this common sense limitation with the three or more unrelated, but, so I still have some real big health and safety concerns. Maybe if you could just comment on that, to put you on the spot a little bit.
Yeah. We share the health and safety. Yeah, we share those health and safety concerns, and we did, that was our primary argument when this first, when the familial status thing first came up in the, in the legislature. And that's why we moved to annual inspections for those properties that were at highest risk of, of public safety issues, those older homes. We wanted to get in there every year and, and check it. That's why we did the interconnected smoke alarms, we felt like that alert was important to have all those interconnected. So, we stopped short of the sprinklers, obviously we were thinking about fire risk with the, with the smoke alarms, but we stopped short of the sprinklers. The sprinklers are, would be incredibly expensive. I, I, I can't give you an exact number, but my best guess, just sitting here off the cuff, is probably on the low end, seven, eight thousand dollars, depending on the home and the age, and it's, you know, that the, the infrastructure it has. I wouldn't be surprised if you'd have some that would go fifteen or, or north of that even. And we just didn't think, you know, there's, there's a balancing act there. And we felt annual inspections and the smoke alarms is probably a good place to be. We don't see a whole lot of structure fires in the communities. Certainly, if we felt like we needed to put in the sprinkler provisions, we would do that, but, again, we're, we're trying to think of affordability and, and weigh all those into every regulation that we, we, we recommended, and we just stopped short on that one.
So Rodney?
Go ahead.
Oh, I said, I know it's not mentioned in, in the PowerPoint here, but we also, we also consider historic and conservation districts in our downtown neighborhoods, so if the historical use of a house was for single-family uses, if they wanted to put a large addition, that would go through the Historic Preservation Commission, they would look at the design, is it compatible with the neighborhood, is it compatible with the use, the intended use of the property? Not to say that they wouldn't allow an expansion, but it would go through an extra level of review. And for some, if it's that expansive, it'd be hard to get approved if you're in historic or conservation district.
There might be lots of other questions we could ask, but let's find out what John has to say, what, what, just summarize what was in your memo.
Right. Well, and I'll, maybe I'll try to focus on, you know, I, I basically tried to identify what I would call a more comprehensive approach toward the question of how do we promote a diverse demographic and housing choices in the core neighborhoods? I did meet with, in the preparation of this memo, real estate agents, the Affordable Housing Coalition, Austin Yu Wu, a former pastor of a church in, in the North Side. So these, these came out of those conversations. I, I would say, basically, what staff has been doing is going in the right direction. What, what concerned me was that the nine thirty-eight East Jefferson seemed to indicate that despite all the changes, it was still possible to build an addition which resulted in seven baths, a seven-bedroom, seven baths, but more than that, once the moratorium is lifted, on lots of similar size, and there are many of them, I don't know, could you show the, that graphic of the residential density?
Sure. I was just, this is the nine thirty-eight East Jefferson house.
Yeah.
So if people wanna see the elevations.
So the, yeah. I don't know if you can turn it or not. Or maybe.
The next one is? I'm not IT. All right.
There you go. The, the area of concern that, that I have is, is with the university, university city zone, which is a little bit different than the university impact zone, it's a little bit smaller, some of the areas with high-density multifamily would not be within the boundary of the university city zone, but you, you can kind of get a sense, it's a little difficult on this at its scale, but the, the lot size of nine thirty-eight Jefferson is not uncommon in the core neighborhoods. So the possibility of developing a building of similar size, and, and really, the issue is, is not so much the size of the building, but the bedroom count. So, it seems to me, given our, our goals, that we need to spend some time looking at how to, to further regulate outcomes in terms of additions and new development. I, I think we are moving in the right direction, but I, I, I'm just not comfortable saying, yeah, let's lift the moratorium when, when there's that potential for houses with, with bedroom counts that are like we haven't seen in decades. And I've also had some preliminary conversations and, and contact with Ames and Cedar Falls, and I'm sensing that their controls would not result in seven baths, seven bedrooms. It would be a smaller number. So, I'm, I, I would like to, you know, and I, I don't know that we will need till March first, you know, I, I really can't say, but it, it does seem that there are ways in which, you know, our kind of sister university towns are looking at this issue, and that there, there may be ways we can further control outcomes, which, as I said, the, the other aspect of this is that, and this gets into some of my other policies that I've, I'm suggesting, if we find that there is a loophole, and there are these buildings with high bedroom counts, it will pretty, in my view, it will most likely preempt the opportunity to do something which would much more clearly achieve our, our goals of diverse demographic and housing choice. And that's, that's where the, you know, the Affordable Housing Coalition's position came in, I think they understood that, and felt that there, if there is an opportunity to achieve that, it's something that we should consider. So, I think those are the key things, but as I said, I, I really wanted to put everything on the table, because it's, in my mind, it's not just regulatory control, it's also about offering some opportunities, incentivizing what we want, not just simply preventing what we don't want, but advocating for what we want. I think we have a pretty clear goal there, let's point everything in that direction. And I think if you read the, you know, some of the neighbors' responses, there are some issues that, that core neighborhood residents really struggle with, and it goes everything from, you know, the fear of further destabilization to issues of trash, you know, that overflows and, and impacts the, you know, the experience of the public right of way. So I just wanted to get everything out there, I realize some of these are more long-term goals, but I think they're all important in the end, that we, we, we were mindful of them and, and make progress with them.
Okay, so we can process this more during our formal meeting, but I wanted to make sure we had a chance to hear this background information and process it a little bit before we got into the formal meeting. And we can go back over this territory, like you said, Bruce. But based on, on what we've heard, I think the question before us is very clear, do we see good reasons to keep the existing deadline for the moratorium, or do we want to terminate it earlier, as called, as called for in the proposed ordinance? That, that's the choice before us, so. We can come back to that when we get to item twelve in the formal meeting. Okay, so other agenda items?
I have IB five, I guess, IB three?
IP three?
Yeah, December five, racial equity report card. Am I right?
Oh, no, we're still on the agenda items, Maz, not, not the information packets.
I think Bruce had started to mention six E and six F. I know I got an email from Karen Cubby, and I don't know the history of this, but her comment in her email was that Emma Harvath was very specific about the use of her middle initial. And so Karen was proposing, wondering if we can make the change, and how difficult that would be to, in the name of the, in the naming of the park, Emma J. Harvath, and also in the maintenance agreement. So, I mean, I hate to throw these things out at the last minute after documents have been done, but Karen brought it up.
And, yeah, right, I think, how easy would it be to just amend that and add that J?
You can amend those items on the, on the floor tonight, if you wanted to, to do that. From, you know, from our standpoint, it's, you know, a name on a website, and then there's a park sign, there's already an existing park sign, it's been Emma Harvath Park unofficially for a while, and there's a nice stone monument that has the name on it, so if you, if you wanted us to go out and change the sign, you're, you may be looking at a seven to fifteen thousand dollar expense, depending if we put in our standard park sign or work with their stone monument. I don't see a need to rush out there and do that. But we can certainly officially name it with the middle initial and list it on the website, and then Parks and Rec Publications with the middle initial.
So I noticed that the agenda reads, motion to approve items, items three through eight is amended with a change to item six E, naming new park in Peninsula, Emma J. Harvath Square Park, so that's good, but it's, it's also F, isn't it? Because.
It's six E and six F, yeah.
I would say D, E, and F, as needed, to make that correction.
Six, yeah.
Okay.
I have six J.
Sorry, which one?
Six J.
Six J.
Personal policy update, I just wanna ask Jeff, how that goes, like, they met with you, or can you give us update?
We had a labor management meeting last week, I believe, and we answered some questions they had, clarified some of the changes that we made. And my understanding is that they're comfortable with you voting on that tonight, but they are here and they can speak to that.
I also wanted to speak to that, and I wanted to thank you, Jeff, for meeting with them, because that is kind of what I initially asked, and I, I do appreciate that, and it sounds like the meeting went, went very well, and it helped to alleviate some of the concerns that, that they had, so I thank you for that, and to the union. And I would, I would now vote to approve that resolution.
Well, it'll just be part of the consent counter.
Right, the consent counter.
Okay, so without objection, that's what we'll do?
Uh huh.
Okay, so, any other agenda items? I know we got some correspondence from Charlotte, who's not here, I guess, tonight, Austin, but she makes a suggestion near the end, it has to do with topics for our meeting, the council's meeting with the student government. Do you wanna say just a few words about that?
Yes, she is absolutely.
This is item eight G that I'm referring to.
Yeah, and the correspondence this week is finals week for UI students, so she had some things to take care of for tomorrow, I think a couple exams papers of that sort, so she wasn't able to make tonight, but the results are, the correspondence is regarding a survey that was distributed to members of the undergraduate and graduate student governments about potential meeting items for the upcoming joint meeting in two thousand twenty. The results are pretty standard, nothing out of the norm, housing ranked by far as the predominant concern, I think a couple other health and safety-related things, as well as addressing, how to, addressing solutions or items for climate change, so that's what's contained in that.
Okay, good deal, thank you. Any other agenda items? Okay, let's go to the December fifth information packet.
I have item IB three?
Yep, the, the memo from Stephanie Bowers about.
Yes.
Equity report card.
Very nice, colorful report, I love it, but I have some question. You know, first, I know this is a report, but I ask Jeff also this question, this is just a report, or they want the council, is, what does the report tell us, and what do you want us to do about this?
Stephanie?
So, this was an attempt to make it clearer where the city was on racial equity. In the past, we've always published a report, but with all the years that we've been collecting the data and publishing it, it probably at least would have been a little under twenty pages, if not a little over. And so, this year, we just tried, tried to make it simpler to, to let the public know and the council know where we're at, what things we need to improve on, and what things we're making progress on.
Sure, and, and when you say like, say I'm gonna take the, the bad one, black or Ameri-, African-American increase by twenty-six percent, do you say like this by or to, or what the twenty-six percent is? Like, is it increased by twenty-six percent from the, what we had before, or this is now twenty-six percent?
So, the report card is looking at the numbers we had in two thousand fourteen and comparing them to the numbers that we had in two thousand eighteen.
Oh, okay.
Which are the most recent numbers we have to publish.
I see.
Yeah.
But the increase by twenty-six, we're gonna add it to the one, so we can know now how many, no, no, twenty-six, that's increase happening between that time and now.
If you look at two thousand fourteen, so it's not a cumulative, so it's not two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, it's the number from two thousand fourteen and the number from two thousand eighteen.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this is not question for you, but I really wanna, the number of traffic stopped from year to year for black or African-American males is not reported, and it's not in the police department's annual report. Without having that information, I cannot assess this impact of the traffic stop number on the black drivers. What I meant is, we don't see actual number, how many people did we stop, like, per year, I don't know, if, if.
Good evening, Jody Mathely Police Chief. So I'll give you an example, in two thousand eighteen, we stopped for male African-Americans, about sixteen hundred male African-Americans, and for white males, for traffic stops in two thousand eighteen, around five thousand. 5,000. So that kind of gives you an idea of those numbers. We do, and this is in our annual report, about 12,000 traffic stops per year on average. And so those are kind of the numbers we're dealing with. We're talking about the females, for African-Americans, about 700, just over 700 females in 2018, and about 3,500 white females in 2018, if that helps you with, put it in perspective. These are raw numbers, these are numbers that we keep track of, the number of stops by race, ethnicity, and we report it to Stephanie's office. Dr. Barnum's report is a little more dialed in, it deals with not just the number of stops itself, but compared to the benchmarks of the numbers on the roads, day, night, so he indexes that. So, you know, he really drills down a little bit more on the science of how successful or not successful that we are in traffic stops. And as you recall, last year, we had a, saw some positive things in the extreme values for the index for officers, that we don't have them out in right field, that they're six times more likely to stop a black driver than a white driver. That is now peeling back. The median of all our officers has now decreased as well, we saw some success there. But those short-term trends are nice, but I like the fact that Stephanie put out a five-year, hey, what does that look like? Now, Mayor, you've mentioned it several times, trends are what we need to look at, not just year-by-year successes, but what is the trend? We need to continue to trend this in a positive direction. We've had success with the outcomes, with citations and arrests from traffic stops arrests, but also overall arrests, as you can see. So we've got some things to celebrate, but we've got a lot of work to do.
Chief, it's my...
Speaking about a lot of work to do, I know that since you're coming, you're working very hard to reduce this kind of number, but do you have, did the police department have really clear plan, or programs, or whatever, to reduce this number? I really don't like this number.
Sure.
And increasing is not decreasing, that's really not good for the people who live here.
I think it speaks volumes, I think, that if you're a person of color driving, that you're, you know, one and a half times more likely to get stopped than if you're a white driver. That's an issue, and we understand that, and the officers are starting to understand that as well. I submitted a strategic plan to you last year during Dr. Barnum's presentation, that, you know, we continue to deploy resources in a proper manner, we're continuing with the education with implicit bias. Matter of fact, we're working with the Iowa City Chapter of NAACP now on another implicit bias training. And also the community policing efforts, we just hired a new person for that, for the outreach assistance. So we have the plan in place, it's got to be constant, we can't let up off the gas pedal, and we hope to continue to see it move in the right direction.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, it's my understanding, too, that you have gotten rid of the consent search in terms of, you're not doing the consent searches anymore, which is a key driver that we found with the data.
Right, and the good part about that is we never said, you absolutely can't do it. Sometimes there's probable cause involved, but what we've trained them to do is to learn that these fishing expeditions are not successful. And so we, those are almost zero now, the consent searches, which is what we were after. So that's, we've taken some really good steps. Some of those aren't reflected in some of these report cards, because they're numbers that are, you know, they would take hours to talk about, but there are some successes. But this is a great report to remind us that we have work to do and to keep the community informed.
So Stephanie and Chief, I like the report card, and we get that out very clearly. The previous report, there was just way too much information in it, hard to process, hard to digest, and so on. So this draws attention to some key factors, that's the best thing about it. But here's my recommendation, that you, if you haven't already done this, that you test it with other members of the community, to see how they respond to the report card. See what kind of questions they ask, see what they don't understand, try to figure out how to fill in the gaps, because I think this could be interpreted in a whole bunch of ways that would not necessarily be good. But still, you need to find out, and that means getting out and talking with diverse members of the community.
And Channel 7, just, matter of fact, talked to Charlie, he was on TV regarding this report, as was the Johnson County Neighborhood Centers, and so...
Yeah, and I know the Daily Island ran an article in the press, I talked to the Press Citizen today, so they should be. And we have the City Managers Roundtable in January, so this was going to be a topic that would be discussed with that group. And the report card is also a way for us to kind of set up more of an action plan or goals when we look at the city in terms of racial equity. So I think that was, you know, the intent, to map it in a way that was clearer to the council, to the community, and then use it to really begin to focus on what we're trying to achieve with racial equity, instead of just kind of being vague and improving, so.
Can I just clarify one thing? Are the raw numbers that these percentages are coming from, are they in, like, the police annual report, police department annual report?
There are some numbers, the number of drivers is not. The number of traffic stops is in annual report, you can see it go back and forth, but the actual...
By race and gender and...
No, no, just the number of stops.
Okay.
So we could certainly start adding that. But that's, Dr. Barnum's report sits on the internet, you know, on our webpage, and I think that's more dialed in, because we use benchmarks instead of just raw numbers. Raw numbers can be misleading...
Sure.
...without being put in perspective and have the science behind it, so.
But as the mayor just said, this is great, and this is like really a version that everyone can look at it and read it and know the problem, without like going to the website and look at the details. And you know who's the people who go to website of the city on route, like, read all those reports, not the people that we want them to see this also. That's why I really encourage this report, like, for me, I said 26, yeah, it's ugly, but I really don't know actual number. You know, instead of you saying 26, maybe you can still have that 26, but the report you just told me like 500, like, white male, and I forget the black male, how many?
1,600.
Yeah, 1,600. This is much important than you put 26. When you say 1,600, there's black male who being stopped, and 500 is a white male.
5,000.
5,000, black male. You know, this is, after that, you know, people can compare it very easy and can understand the report. You can put both, I guess, and this is will make 26, or this is will make, you know.
Right, and Stephanie mentions it in the narrative on the memo side, you know, going from 18 to 2, it shows a percentage drop, but the sampling's so small, because there was 18 in 2014 and 2 in 2018, you know, that percentage drop can be misleading. So you're right, the more information, the better, sometimes it's harder to digest, but...
I know, yeah, but... And the memo did also, the, all of the reports for the Human Rights Commission and for also the employee stats are available online for people to, if they wanted to take a closer look at what those actual numbers look like from the...
Okay, this requires a closer look, but I'm conscious of the time, and I'm hoping we can get through the work session agenda before the formal meeting. But follow up on this, if you would, with Chief Mathely or Stephanie?
This is on here again, I really want to say something final, but this is, this is something like on the IBs, and I asked for it, I guess I should deserve to continue, even if we can do the work session afterward. But I, what I really believe, you make me forget even what I want to say. But just, I want to see those number, yeah, the website things, I understand that still, but I told you, I don't go to the website, and all the people who look like me, we don't go to the website and look at things. I go to the website of the city unless I want something. That's why we always say we want to make it exclusive for everyone. If you put it in like a small sheet like this, wonderful, I love it. And if you just add more number for the people to understand it, and easy to understand, will be great. But this is really great, thank you very much for doing that.
Thank you.
Now you can move on.
Thanks, Chief, thanks, Stephanie. Any other items on the December 5th?
Just real quick, IP 2, I wanted to thank Jeff for that information, I really appreciate that, the snow and ice operations, because I get the most correspondence regarding clearing of the streets, you know, why didn't they plow my street? But with that color graphic and the red, blue, green, it really showed, you know, where the priorities are, and that it will get done, just be patient, and so having that actual information to share with the community members is helpful, thank you.
It's quite a map, I'd call it art.
It's beautiful, very colorful.
It was really useful to kind of understand the, you know, the nuts and bolts of the system. I, you know, the maps also highlighted for me, you know, that the core areas where most of the infractions are, or the, you know, sightings. So it's a really difficult situation in the core neighborhoods, and so one question I wanted to ask, you know, what would be, is there a process by which we could explore the idea of some form of assessment district, or something which would, first of all, address the curb cuts, the curb ramps, which are, I would say, an ADA, you know, just a complete breakdown of the system at the corners? And then the number of property owners who do not properly remove snow from their sidewalks is also an issue? So, and the enforcement process just drags everything out. So some way of trying to do a, you know, if it's possible to consider creating an assessment district, I just wanted to ask if that might be...
We have the ability to assess the cost, so you're not talking about that.
No, I'm talking about an assessment to pay for snow removal upfront.
That's a tax.
No, and we can't, we can't even require the curb ramps. We promote that in our social media, we say, please be mindful, please do that, but that's not the property owner's responsibility.
I'd suggest, if you want to pursue this further, you defer it to a future meeting or bring it back up in one way or another. Can we move to the December 12th packet?
Kelly would probably like us to take care of IP 10, the KXIC schedule.
Yeah, Kelly, what is pre-record for December 25th and January 1st?
You have the option to pre-record your...
Ahead of time.
But they'll be on the radio anyhow, if you...
A play on that day.
Okay, well...
I'll volunteer for January 8th.
I'll take the 15th.
I'll take the 22nd.
Pauline said the 22nd.
22nd, Rockne, no, Rockne, it wasn't Rockne, because he won't be here.
Did you really? I can still talk, come on.
Nice try, Rockne.
For Laura or Janice? Can they speak now?
How about the 29th and the 5th?
I do know our new counselors might want to take some of these.
Might want to do that.
So maybe, can we do, can we do an email? Well, I guess we can't all respond.
Or maybe we can just do until January 8th and wait for the rest.
What do we have so far, Kelly? Can you review what we have so far?
Through the 22nd.
Right, it's through January 22nd, other than the two holidays.
So maybe pick it up after the 15th, is what I would suggest with the new counselors.
Who is the 15th?
I am.
Susan, okay, thank you, Susan.
Yeah, I'm sure you'll be able to figure that out at our next meeting.
But them to the test right in their first month.
And no takers for the 25th or the 1st?
25th?
To pre-record.
To pre-record for that day.
Pre-record.
Because that's Christmas, Christmas and New Year's.
I'm not going to be here anyway.
We can have staff fill it if you want.
Staff?
Staff.
Have staff do the 25th.
25th and the 1st, or somebody have the 1st?
I'll take the 1st and 15th.
Okay, is that okay with everybody? We'll just have it filled through the 22nd and then deal with the rest later. Okay, can we move to council updates? We can, please. On assigned boards, commissions, and committees, start with Pauline, move to the left.
I don't have anything.
Susan?
I do not either.
John?
Nothing, although, you know, ICAD, Mark Nolte has offered his resignation, so he's moving on.
What do you mean, nothing, then? That's pretty big news.
Well, I know, but in terms of our meetings, but the organization is definitely going through a major shift.
Okay, Rockne?
Not too much, I just touched base with John Kenyon about 30 minutes ago, and we had talked a little bit about, you know, when they were going to learn about the new counselor that's going to serve, so other than that, I don't have anything else.
Maz?
Nothing.
Bruce?
Nothing for committee.
All right, I'll report one thing about the Convention and Visitors Bureau. They held their annual Bravo Awards event on the 11th of December, and I was enormously pleased to give Bravo Awards to three terrific Iowa City people, Angie Jordan from the South District, Joe Tiefenthaler from Film Scene, and Rachel Carson from ICAD, so, I'm sorry, City of Literature. I made that same mistake at the Bravo Awards event, Rachel Carson, City of Literature. So it was a real treat to be able to do that. And the Partnership for Alcohol Safety is meeting on the 19th of this month. So that's it for me. I think that means we're done with our work session. Okay, so we'll take a break till our formal meeting at 7:00.
I think you're done from your last one.
My last work session, that's right. There ought to be a song.